You're going to go in, sir.
All right. Andy, we're ready to go. All right, I will, I'd like to open up the Village of Marvin Town Hall meeting. This is the first time we've ever done this at the barn here at the park. So, welcome, everyone. I see sometimes it takes a little bit of food offerings to get more people to show up, which is a good thing, so please enjoy yourself before they leave there. I shall, we also have a full quorum here, and I'll get into introductions shortly, but more importantly, thank you for coming. I'm looking forward to this. This is one of the rare opportunities that we can interact, talk back and forth to the community, so, welcome. First off, we have a call to order, and then secondly, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes?
No.
Nope.
No changes? So, I need a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to start off with introductions. If you guys don't already know, some of the people, the true key players of Village of Marvin is our staff. I mean, they are, they're always there for you. I all the time hear from people that had to interact with them compared to other towns. They just, high praises for our staff, so we thank you for that. On the far end, we have Austin Yao, who is our clerk. Next, seated next to him is our town planner, Hunter Nestor. He does quite a drive to come down. Where do you drive from, Hunter?
Uh, Denver, Denver.
Denver, out in Denver, so he comes all the way from Denver to show up to work every day. We thank him for that. Next to him is Christina Amos. She is our village town manager, and she's been, how long you been with us? Over three years? Three years, yeah. So, just great, great people on staff. Somewhere in the back is our finance officer, Jamie Bays. I don't know if she is, I saw her earlier, she's, maybe she's out that way. Derek Dirks, where's Derek? Derek's in the back enjoying some food. He's our, he's our public facilities manager. Julie Rothrock, is she here today? Okay, she is not, okay. Our deputy finance officer. And Gretchen Calhoun, our office assistant. So, also, if you haven't already figured it out, we have added another officer. We asked, and we, you guys, in a survey, and it was overwhelmingly clear that you all wanted an additional officer. So, we have added another full-time officer. That penny increase in tax, we haven't increased taxes for, since I've been in office, so it's been well over eight years. That one cent tax went, all of it went directly to hiring that full-time officer. So, the two officers we have, if you haven't already met them, are Tommy Gallus, our deputy sheriff, and Mason Montgomery. So, if you get a chance, if you... Are they here tonight or not? Okay, they're not here tonight, but get a chance, definitely say hello to them. To my left, we have councilman Jamie Line. We have, next to me, mayor pro tem Kim Vanderburg, and councilman Bob Markelies, and councilmember Andy Wartman. So, and I, Joe Polino, your mayor, so. But thank you again for coming. We're going to get right into it, as far as, go right onto the next subject, which is accomplishments. I'll turn that over to Christina.
So, if y'all can't hear me, just yell if you can't hear. I'll try to project out as loud as I can. But I've been in the process of going over the accomplishments that we've had over the last year. Somebody's made still into the last fiscal year, but sometimes projects still over the fiscal year, so. New Village Hall, this has been a project that's been going on for several years now. The council back in 2016, if I can remember correctly, put some funds aside to begin constructing a new Village Hall. In 2018, sorry, 2019, we actually went out for bid, and received bids about double what we expected it to be, at $1.7 million. So, cancel at the time, stepped back and looked at different places that we could potentially entertain on Newtown Road for a Village Hall. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay, let me, let me step up here.
Go stand in the middle.
Yeah, we already know all this stuff. You can stand up there.
Okay.
All right, so, back in 2018, 2019, I'm sorry, we did go out for bids for Village Hall. They came back at $1.7 million, so we kind of stepped back and looked at different facilities, mainly off houses that we could retrofit on Newtown Road. We looked at a couple of different possibilities, and we decided to go back out for bid in 2021, where we received a $1.4 million bid for the new Village Hall. And so, obviously, you've seen it on the corner of Marvin School and Newtown Road. It's going along pretty good. We're hoping to be in there by the beginning of the next calendar year, so hopefully we'll be having a bigger space here shortly. Landscaping the roundabouts, as you've seen, the two roundabouts that we have been able to complete thus far, we've landscaped those, so they're more aesthetically pleasing as folks are going around those. That's something that our PRG board was tasked with doing, and deciding all the different landscaping that goes along there, so we're really excited about that. Over the last year, we've also received a grant from CRTPO that was around $1 million, and that's to help, to provide additional funding to create the loop a little bit further down the road. You're going to go over that later, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. We also launched the new website, so hopefully that's easier for you guys to use than the previous one. Been very successful thus far, and kind of getting things out to the community. We've also, as you've probably seen, Counterfield Creek and Meadow Lark, Weddington Chase has got new signs with our nice brand on it. I think that's it. Here to joke. So, we're really excited about those signs. They look really well, they look really nice. Park enhancements, as you may have seen as you're walking up, we do have a nine-hole disc-off course currently that is completely constructed and ready to be used, so feel free to come out on the weekends at night and take advantage of that course. We also have some new trail sections, Preserve Inner Trail, Tolemore Phase III is next year, Derek? Tolemore Phase III, is that next year? Next year? Those are the new trail sections that we're going to have coming up. So, as of currently, we have about 3.5 miles of total greenway space. Finance, last year, we actually put $500,000 back into fund balance. We're hoping to expect about $200,000 this year. And fund balance is like our savings account, basically. Increased communications, sorry, hang on. Increased communications and public engagements with these Town Hall events that we've had, coffee with council events, and then the weekly newsletters. I'm sure you guys have seen a lot more communication from the village with the emails that we're sending out, so that's something that we've really tried to get accomplished this last year. Marvin Heritage District, I'm actually going to let Hunter, our planner, go into more detail on that later on, so y'all will hear more about that. Solid Waste Services, I'm sure you've seen a lot of stuff going on about that, and we'll go over to more detail a little bit later, but that's expected to start on April 1st. And then road infrastructure projects, as we mentioned, the roundabout, we're actually putting in irrigation right now for those roundabouts. And then we were able to secure over $450,000 in additional funding for the proposed roundabout at Newtown and Marvin's, Marvin Road. That was through partnership with CRTPO, and then some additional funding that was discretionary funding from our legislators. Back in 2018, 2019, we also did some assessments for curb and gutter to look at some of the repairs that are needed on our roads, and we are able to fund 100% of those repairs. So, you're currently seeing, if you're in a neighborhood that has our roads, you're probably seeing some repairs being done on that curb and gutter. And then last, in the road infrastructure projects, currently, we have over 16 miles of village-maintained roads, and this is something that we've obtained over the last three years, we, three or four years. We just got into the roads business not too long ago. And then legislation adopted, 2020 land use plan, Parks and Greenways master plan, charter change, road infrastructure damage, prohibiting left turns on Marvin Road during peak hours. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Next up, we have Village Hall update.
I was going to say that to you, too.
You're back on it.
So, that's the picture of our Village Hall, as you have driven by and probably seen it. Curb and gutter just went out probably in the last day or two. Everybody keeps asking, is it going to be that color? No, it's going to be white, they just haven't painted it yet, so this is a good picture of what it's going to look like. It's about 6,200 square feet, and we did leave room for expansion as we grow, so. Is that, is that the next? Does anyone have any questions on that?
Just really briefly, two of the projects we're working on with Village Hall, we want to install a time capsule at the site. If you guys have any ideas about what to include, what really represents Marvin, what future generations can, can understand about Marvin today when they open that time capsule, please send us your ideas. If you have anything interesting you would think would be cool to go in, send that to us as well. Also, for the new Village Hall in the lobby, we are looking to display some objects of historical significance. If you have anything that relates to the early days of Marvin, or before even was Marvin, please consider donating to us. I'm pretty sure that would be tax deductible. Also, if you have any items that are repurposed from materials, we'd also like to include that as well. Thanks.
You're good to go on.
Hey, one thing before you move on. Can I, can I speak?
Yeah.
Actually, a couple of these slides I wanted to mention to you guys, so you could see, really wanted to do this in the accomplishment section, but before we move on, I wanted to show you guys, this has been the property tax rate history, just so you can kind of vaguely see it there. Two and a half cents when we actually incorporated in 1994, and so since then, we've only gone up a few cents. This last year or two was where the one cent increase was applicable to the law enforcement officer. Also, I wanted to mention our audit highlights for 2021. Let's see, our, our council set a goal of 8% several years ago. That basically means our savings account, they want 8% of our expenditures over revenues to be reserved into our savings account, and since that time, we have actually been able to get our fund balance up to 65%. So, we're doing really good financially. Also, wanted to mention, last year, after our audit, we actually went up in our net position by $5 million. Most of this was applicable to roads, but it is a big chunk of change that we actually went up on our net position. Again, just goes over the net position. And you can, you can see all this in our audit for fiscal year 20 on our website, if you have any other questions, or you want to see this in more detail. That's all.
Next up, we have solid waste services update.
That's me again. All right. This is one y'all may have questions on, so if you do, just feel free to interject as we're going along, if that's appropriate.
What's that?
If they have questions?
Yeah, I think if they're into this topic, I think, who have general questions?
So, currently, we're under negotiations with Active. That's going to be who provides our solid waste services. The services to be included are going to be weekly curbside recycling, household garbage, weekly yard, and then seasonal holiday collection, holiday tree collection. We're also going to have an annual electronic bulk and white goods collection event. Basically, we're going to try to coordinate this with the HOAs, because you actually have to bring those items to Village Hall. We'll have someone there assisted with a forklift to help you to get it out of your truck or your trailer. And there's no, there's no fee for that, so we're hoping for that to be more of like a spring cleanup. Everyone keeps their debris that they want in their garage, and they want to get rid of it. We'll do that in spring. Other services, if you need them, or if you desire them, valet services has been requested. This is basically for houses that have a really long driveway, and they don't want to push their stuff all the way up to the road. So, if you want to do that, they will provide valet services. That's an extra fee that you would pay directly to the vendor. Extra bins, of course, if you produce a lot of trash, and you can obtain extra bins from the vendor directly. Curbside bulk, white goods and electronic events, if you don't want, I'm sorry, collection, if you don't want to wait to this one-time event, then you can actually call in for additional services, and they can come and collect those at additional fee. The annual fee that you have seen on your tax bill for this year is going to be $61. Y'all probably already seen your tax bills come out, and y'all saw that $61 solid waste assessment fee on your tax bills. This is for the months of April, May, and June, and they will also be reassessed at the beginning of next year for the tax bills that go out in fiscal year 23, or 22. We're anticipating them to be around $244 a year. So, on average, Marvin Creek is a little different, because y'all actually had some services with, I think it was Waste Pro, that were a little bit cheaper than what we were able to provide, but on average, we have saved consumers about $150 a year. That's all for solid waste. There's specific questions about solid waste, if y'all have any questions?
Are you coordinating the waste to, like, in Marvin Street, some of the other communities? For the solid waste, and that's what we're doing, for, for, for.
So, the question is, are we coordinating with HOAs? We've been coordinating with, yeah, with the, with, 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 with Marvin Street is one that we have had a lot of communications with, and we're excited upon. We've had a lot of communication back and forth, and there'll be more information that goes out. So, yes, we are coordinating with HOAs, maybe we have a front end. So, if you are in HOA and have a certification, feel free to let us know what your, email us, and tell us, or register us, but we've been pushing some out a lot the last couple of months. If you have a team that has it, we need you to register us. Any other questions?
Yes, I guess we're going, like, when does it all take place? When does it start, and, 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 and?
So, the solid waste is starting April 1st of 2022. Yeah, and we'll have more information that goes out before that date, so we'll remind you, and you can get it, if you're starting to have a, 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 Basically what that means is if we're not able to secure additional funding through other sources, then we have to lay out of our pocket. So we've been very diligent trying to get some money from whoever we can provide here. We will pay as much as we can. So we were able to obtain that additional funding. And we believe our state budget plan is a discretionary plan where we have to handle that. So that project should be moving along. We've been told we're in right-of-way position right now. It's going to be trying to sit here and land on the speed now. We'll keep you posted with updates, but that's the last effort we got as of last week. So hopefully that sticks. Any questions on that? This DOT project will be recreated as our project, the program we've done years ago. We have been paying for the officers that are sitting there, working through the traffic. But some of it, we really want to make sure that our traffic congestion is eliminated as much as possible.
Is there a way to be able to slow down signs, even like hard signs up along that hill? To help our community?
So the question was, are we able to put signs up, whether it's separate or like little signs which kind of they are, or actual signs that say slowdown, you know, intersection ahead? The answer to that is unfortunately is to go to wherever it's going to require a funding agreement. It's basically an agreement and get into a group who can put signs there. So anybody who's doing, um, if you get off, you get off. We have some restricted questions in the project.
Abby, listen.
We went.
Abby, listen, you guys are going.
Good question, actually. That's a good question. I'm hoping to get to that later. The question was, what is going to be the detour route? I would assume, do you know it?
Joe Carr. Joe Carr will be one of them. He'll access it.
How many cars are estimated they could move at the same time now?
Fifty thousand.
Yeah. So you expect fifty thousand cars? I'm not saying all of them will be there, but Joe Carr.
Well, keep in mind, it's already happened. So there's fifteen thousand cars when they did two at the same time. They scheduled it, they can, I think get it done in between five to six weeks and have it where they release the things. And they do it after, they don't want to do it during the school year. And they have their reasons for when, and then it's like weather is an issue, so they can't do it in the winter time. So there's all these different factors that they put into place. But they can turn it around in about five to six weeks. So my guess is if you wanted to get over, if you're coming from South Carolina, you're going to make that right turn way before, what's the Nestor?
Well, Shelley Mullis and Ernest.
Shelley Mullis and Ernest to get that way. And that'll be your, you know, they'll take. And I actually have driven it both ways when they closed that road. I went one way when that road was closed, and then I think you're right.
Shelley Mullis.
Shelley Mullis. It was almost the exact same time and maybe a point longer, two mile difference, believe it or not. So I, that will be, I know they will take Joe Carr. And it's going to be probably more challenging for the buses and how they, but they won't be there. Because if they do it on the school year, it's not going to be an issue for the buses.
Yeah, we're concerned with the big road, the road edge and more. And that's pretty much the cut through between Joe Carr and Marvin School. I know we have speed bumps and stuff like that, but I know there's nothing to do.
Yeah, so roads, I'm trying to think how, why, why they would go that way. I know they do already, right? Because that would just be cut through the roundabout. Over here. I guess it was different in the late season.
Yeah, I mean, that was the detour when they did the other two. So I would just make a bad assumption that it's probably going to be the same, unfortunately.
Everybody's kind of nice their way around. We pray around the people less more. We do all different roads. Everybody just picks one and pulls around. It was kind of nice on my own, but for a while, the traffic was alleviated for a while. But I think it's how all the, what was the other road? They use that road too, so. So we will be talking about this shortly, though, as this completes and stuff. There has been, if you've been to any of the meetings that are listened in or anything, at the high level, fifty thousand feet, we've actually talked about taking over roundabouts around. What happens then? We control the speed. To your point over there in the corner that was concerned about that. We may even say, ah, sorry, eighteen-wheelers find a different route. So they're not going through that, you know, where we can create that small-town feel and the heritage district to control it. Now, when we proposed that initially, I think DOT wanted us to take it all the way down to South Carolina, the road, not just the three roundabouts. And as you know, roads are, it's getting more and more expensive to maintain. So, you know, it's a discussion that we're having, which I think would be great if we could put it down to like a, make it miserable for people to cut through and just make it for local traffic and stuff. But the big trucks and the delivery trucks need to find a different way. So there's good things will happen once that's done. And it can't be done fast enough as far as. Are you off the hook for a little bit?
Yes.
All right. Derek, you're up. We got Luke Greenway, Grant, and upcoming Travis.
I think he just ran off.
How timely of him. So we have a song and had a dance on this.
Yes, Scott, he's got.
Me and my shadow. Give us one minute.
All right, so we just approved the contract for the internal preserve trail. That's going to be one of our biggest that we've done yet. Forty-eight hundred linear feet roughly. So it'll, it's this little hairpin right here. It'll tie into the town hall trail, which will be very neat. And then we're also working on an Innisbrook connector to provide access to it for the, obviously, the people in Innisbrook. Tolemore Phase Three is like right next, but it's next fiscal year. Might see if they want to bump it up a little bit. We are waiting on. This yellow piece is in Union County. And so really, we, we need some, an easement granted from the county. If you know where Andy's Ice Cream is in the lighthouse right there, trying to tie, kind of tie it all together and make not one big seamless loop back there between Tolemore and Amber Meadows, which would be nice. And then we'd have a little bridge across that creek there so residents could access Ray Road. And then we did get some money. I have to talk with Hunter about how all that works, but we'll be looking with the development of the town, what do you call it? The Heritage District. We'll be expanding the asphalt greenway that currently runs down Joe Carr and down Marvin School Road. So I can say personally, like, my wife and I rode our bikes one day, and we did all the trails in Marvin, and we got over nine miles in between sidewalks, asphalt, and gravel. So there's not that many mileage of greenway, but when you do it all in one day and connect it all, it's a good, it's a good little ride.
Hey Derek.
Hey Joe.
Can you talk a little bit about the materials that we are using? Because we've, obviously, we've learned as we've gone, and we now have a company we tend to go to as far as doing our trails.
Yep.
Talk a little bit about that and the kind of material. You mentioned bike riding, so you can bike ride, and you can run on it, obviously walk and stuff like that.
Yep.
You know, and again, it's, it has been a process for us in the beginning. We thought, okay, we're putting in a trail, but then when we saw the trail was unacceptable, it was unwalkable. We thought it was like Amber Meadows.
Yeah.
And then that has been corrected, so.
The very, the very first trail we did back when I was on the PRG board with Andy Wartman and we, and John, we didn't really know what we were doing. I didn't know what I was doing. We, we rough cut part of Tolemore Trail with a bobcat about this far off the ground, and it looked great until spring hit, and then everything shot up. And we were out there scrambling with weed eaters and loppers and everything. And I was like, this, this cannot be how you build a trail. And so Robert Epps, who at the time, he said, why don't you talk to the people at the Carolina Thread Trail and get some recommendations? So went to the Thread Trail. They said, you need to talk to Scott Brown at Blue Ridge Trail Works. Turns out, he builds trails out of crushed concrete, and that was, that was the way we went. It turned out amazing. You can, like Joe said, it firms up. You can walk on it. Bob walks it, I think, what, every day, just about? It's stroller friendly, bike friendly, animal friendly, and it's, I forget what I was going to say. And it's permeable, so the material holds up to the weather. But, so we've had a lot of good success with, and oh, we adopted that in our ordinances as the, as our standard for when we build natural surface trails. We do them out of crushed concrete and use that material. So if you haven't seen it, it's here at the park, and it's at Tolemore and Amber Meadows. But it's great. You know, we used to have mulch on the trails here. We were replacing the mulch every six months with, you know, workdays and volunteers that would wash out. This stuff is virtually maintenance-free, so it's great. Do what?
That ordinance applies to developers as well.
Yep, yep. So when we adopted the ordinance to include those standards when we build a natural surface trail, that applies to developers when planning board and council are approving their plans for a new development. If they're going to put in a trail, those standards apply to that as well. So it helps with uniformity throughout the village.
Is that all you have for that?
That's all I have, yep. Oh, and there is a interactive map on the website if you want to know where the trails are located and, or see, you know, which ones are up and coming, going to be built soon.
And did you talk about the grant?
I did not.
I'll hit on, I'll hit on.
I'm going to let Hunter do that.
I'll try.
He's the money guy. So we literally just finished putting in what's called the Ace Place Course. It's a nine-hole, family-friendly, short course, disc golf course. We bought the package from Inova. They design it as all par threes, very family-friendly, take the kids out. You know, if you're an advanced player, you can practice your putting, but there's nothing over a couple hundred, I think, two-hundred-and-thirty feet. So it's very reasonable. We literally just got it in last week. Haven't even really told anybody about it yet because I'm still waiting on the signs to come in to mark the footage for the tees. It's not yardage, evidently, it's footage. But I just walked it with the rep yesterday to shoot the laser and measure it out, and got a lot of great feedback from him on some of the, you know, little specifics we, we did, you know, to make it fit what we wanted here in Marvin. So if, please come out and play it. Hole one, it starts down by the shop, and you just follow, you can see the baskets, follow it around. We'll have some maps put out. We'll have signage marking where the next tees are, marking the tees, marking the distance and everything. So, but I think this is going to be a great asset amenity to our community, and it, and it still maintains the feel of our park and being, you know, very family-friendly and passive recreation. So, and last week, we had a really good National Night Out. It was on a school night this year. We had postponed because of the hurricane, so hope to see it back in August next year. But great music from Southern Express. Our deputies think it was their first time doing it, both of them. They did a tremendous job, got some amazing sponsorships from Publix, Harris Teeter, Jersey Mike's, Nothing Bunt Cakes. So if you go in those businesses, thank them for their support of National Night Out in Marvin. Staff did a great job. John killed it on the grill, as always. And I think that's it. We're looking at ways to make it bigger and better next year. Want to hopefully see the pony rides back. I'd love to see a hot air balloon tethered to the ground out here. So you know anybody that has a business like that that can be good for our National Night Out event? You know, please let me know. And then the biggest event where we've ever tried to pull off is Up and Coming. So, and that's, I think that was, is Councilman Lions Baby. You're, you want it?
Absolutely.
All right.
And by the way, before we move on, just to point out, and a lot of you don't know, you may not understand how the whole tax works and why I always try and urge when I'm with my family to go towards staying in Union County. Those dollars you spend there go to our schools. And we tend to go, or I have years ago, to Harris Teeter up the road. There's nothing wrong against Harris Teeter. At Publix, I will say, they donated over $800 for food for National Night Out. All the leftovers, we moved to a food bank that night. And so I want to thank them, Rich and Mike, and the other sponsors that came in. But if you haven't been to Publix, if Newtown and Providence, please visit it. There's some stores going in there as we speak. There are pizza shops as well, Marcos. And spending the dollars there, those tax dollars, they all go to the road. Then the road divvies it up based on our population taxes. So that tax, basically, they earn on all that money funds. And those to the road, the road divvies it up based on, we're sixty-eight hundred people. So that's why I might always encourage people to spend their nine dinners, and even if it's flat, so we'll be able to, eventually we'll get there.
Go ahead, Derek.
I'm here to cover Marvin Day Celebration. First, before I get started with that, how many people have seen Andy Griffith Show? Okay. In Mayberry, they were proud of their community, and they wanted to show it off. And they wanted everybody to know what, that they were a special community. Well, this council, we got together, and we are extremely excited about being proud of Marvin. And what can, what does Marvin do besides, we just have a bunch of neighborhoods that are around? Well, there's a lot involved in it. And we're excited on May 21st of next, this spring coming up of next year, we're going to have our first annual Marvin Day Celebration. And what's going to be part of that is really, is we're going to start off with a 5K walk. I believe it's a 5K walk. Walk, run, whatever you feel energetic to do. We're going to have tours of Town Hall. By then, Town Hall will be done. In Town Hall, I believe we're going to try to get Gene Stowe to come out and talk about the history of Marvin. He's, he's put together a phenomenal book. He's put together a lot of information about Marvin. And for, I'm sure that there are plenty of people, including myself, that really don't know the history of Marvin. How did it, how did we become Marvin? And what were some of the significant things about Marvin? So we'll have Gene there. We'll do tours of Town Hall. We're going to have equestrian events. So we're known as kind of this equestrian community. So we're going to show those things off, and we're going to highlight those things. We're going to have a car show, park activities, trail tours, garden exhibits. One of the things that we're going to kind of, we're going to have stuff throughout the entire day. There's going to be a schedule communicated out to everyone, so everyone can kind of pick and choose. There may be some things they don't want to attend, some things they do. What we're going to try to do is have just a big culmination at the end and have a concert and to be announced some of the acts that may be coming into that. But we're really excited about that. In addition, we'll have food trucks at all of these locations to, for, so if you're coming and you're hungry, you want coffee, whatever the case may be, you're going to be able to have, we're going to take care of all that stuff for you. But there's going to be activities literally for, for all ages and for people, not just for Marvin, but we want people from outside of Marvin to come in and go, you know what? This is a very exciting place to be, and there's, they, they offer a lot. We're going to have information from, we're going to do a lot of the activities up at the high school and the elementary schools. A great opportunity for people to ask questions about the schools and the school systems and what's going on. We're going to be providing information on that. The other thing that we're still working on, but will soon come out, is how does all this stuff happen? And we're going to be looking for sponsors. We have a lot of companies and businesses that are very close by. They may not be here in Marvin, but they're very close by, they're very active in this area. So we're going to look for sponsors to have this put on, to be a great event for everyone. We are extremely excited about it. I hope that once we get closer, we get more and more information. It's going to be pushed out to you, and, but this council is very excited about that. And we're going to hopefully put together a, a great show for everybody.
Thanks, Derek. And you mentioned Gene Stowe. Just for your information, if you don't know, there's a movie out. It's being, what do you call it? The Grand Grand premiere. Is it out here this Saturday in Monroe? And it's, it's the story of Marvin. And I heard you all, I think it's still available or not, but I think it's like five or six o'clock. If you can probably look it up and find out, then I'm not sure I will be my own fan event with Marvin. So I'm, I'll make that. I definitely want to see the movie, and it's, it's real interesting history of, we were a hundred years ahead of what's wrong. All this craziness on, I'm telling you, this now, it is special. And it started with the two ladies that took in an African-American child and raised that child. And basically, when it came time to deplete the land and deplete the two African-American family, and that's when the inheritors came out. There was a big court case in Monroe, and they won the case. And they, where they deplete hundreds of acres of land of Marvin way back in the day. So it's a great story, and they, and it's officially a movie now.
Spoiler, there is a book.
What spoiler?
Spoiler.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's okay. You know what? How it is, I just wanted to know, I just learned more about, more than we don't know. So. Um, next up. Marvin, Marvin Heritage District, about your council.
All right, so for those that you don't know or heard the idea of the Heritage District, this has been something that's been the worst ten, fifteen years. Used to start as a village center concept, all of that. Well, over the last year or two, it really kind of started building up and coming to fruition. And basically, I was in a, yeah, real quick. So just to give an overview of it, for you guys who don't know, it's a mixed-use district that's kind of creating a village center that has some light commercial uses and, or, you know, that, that allows light commercial uses and mixes in with the residential and the main thoroughfare there along Newtown Road. Currently, one of the things that staff is working on and planning, currently in Planning Board is the Small Area Plan. Small Area Plan ties into our Land Use Plan, and it's just kind of a vision document that builds off all the public input and stuff that's went into this district over the last couple of years, builds off the goals and vision that's in the adopted Land Use Plan, incorporates all of that, and builds the foundation that is kind of that, that guide and vision document for, for this district that developer, staff, council uses as this thing moves forward. Uh, this is just kind of an overview of the district. This is the proposed future land use map. This has not been adopted yet, but this is kind of, you know, the idea of it. Like I said, it's mixed-use. It mixes in the residential, specific mixed-use on kind of certain properties, as well as has some light commercial and the civic uses that are already there along Newtown. So the way this, the way this district's being created is through the zoning, zoning ordinance. It's being developed, it's a form-based code. Form-based code kind of takes in a lot of design standards, aesthetics, and that's kind of the intent why it was done this way, is because the goal of this is to really keep that small, small village-type feel, the rural character and all of that in it. So any type of development has those characteristics in that type of need development. The anticipated for this is that, if you guys, once, the ones that are familiar with this, it was on council's agenda for approval back in June. Had to come back off to become compliant with a lot of the 160D legislation from the state and as well as some staff changeover, myself starting in July 6th. So it's getting there, and the intent for it to be on plan, go to the committee, the Heritage Strategic Plan Committee in November, Planning Board, and then further on the council, depending on, you know, their feedback and recommendations.
Any questions on, uh? All right, next up, we have fourteen, how do you know fourteen? Give me a line and coffee with council.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that, when this council first got put together, we, we did a kind of a laundry list of things that we wanted to accomplish. One of the things, what can we improve on? What can we do better that other councils have, had just simply not done and not worked on? And one of the things was, first and foremost, on everyone's list up here, was transparency and accountability. So how do, how do we do that? How do we fix it? How do we change that? We're doing what we're doing tonight. So before, in the past, we never had a Town Hall meeting. So now we're working with, you got a spring and a fall Town Hall meeting. And one of the things, the other things that we came up with was Coffee with Council. So Coffee with Council is twice a month. For those who, for those who work during the day, we've got an evening one. And for those who don't work during the day or have the time, can come by, we do one during the day as well. And they're always communicated out. Austin does a great job of making sure that we have those dates out there. Matter of fact, we've got a, we've got some sheets here. And, and really, that's a time for everyone, do you mind just taking one and passing it around? That's really a time for everyone to come in. If you've got a question, you've got a concern, you got, you hear rumors, you hear something that's going on, come to Coffee with Council. And I'm going to get on everyone in here, okay? Please don't throw arrows at me. Coffee with Council is a huge success simply because we're sitting there, there's two council members each time, and we sit there, and we want to address the issues, the concerns, the rumors, and everything that's out there. We sit there and we're ready for them. Unfortunately, and the reason we want to promote this, is I think Austin and I have a, we have a running bet at every Coffee with Council. Over and under two. I always take the under, and I always force him to take the over, and I typically win. So really, take advantage of that. So if you hear something that's going on and you've got to complain or something, we need to hear about it. We want to hear about it. So Coffee with Council is a great time to do it. Again, you see, there's, there's times for everyone to come in and do it. And then. No appointments. I mean, come in, and it's, it's a way to dialogue, like the Town Hall meeting. You know, a lot of times when we have a council meeting, you come in and you do your public, here's my, here's my public announcement, or what I'm going to make my public thing. And then there's really no dialogue. And many different reasons is because of that. Well, when you go to Coffee with Council or these Town Hall meetings, we want the dialogue. We want you to, you know, where we can talk back and forth and converse and let's, you know, put it out on the table. That's where the accountability comes in and the transparency comes in. So, but the biggest thing is, we want, we want everyone in Marvin to have a say. We want their, your voices heard, and we're giving you every opportunity to do that, and certainly Coffee with Council kind of adds to that. But just another side note with communication, you'll also see Austin and the entire staff and team does a great job of making sure the communications that go out. I'm sure you probably get tired of some of the email, but we want to make sure that, just things that you don't think of. Maybe it's daylight saving time, we're changing time. We put that reminder out there. We put that reminder out there. Half-days of school, whatever the thing is, we put that on the website, we push it out and there's communications that go out. So thank you for, you know, for those who have attended because we do, we've had some participation, but I strongly and highly recommend coming and sitting down and talking with us and, and we have donuts, we have refreshments there. And so, but...
We're making the ones we'll change to cocktails with counsel.
Well, I think, then we'd get a lot of people in and the conversation would be totally different. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Now, just basically, general questions. Anything you guys, we have to talk about again as far as everything goes, if you would like to talk. I mean, we could either walk around, talk just individually, or you could just shout out questions and go in and do the best of our ability and the current knowledge that we have.
Um, Jamie, you put the emails, I hear you have a place, you have a charter, you're looking for a student, or a citizen number, like number five. Has anything ever happened to that? Is there a, are you, are there citizen members?
The youth council.
A youth council?
Youth council.
Is there a youth council with...
Not yet. We are working on putting one together. We, anybody for our advisory boards, if they're 18 and older, can join or sign up and apply. So as long as you're 18 or older, but we are looking at doing like a youth council. It's a lot of work. Austin has done a ton of research on it and we just need a little more staff capacity to get it together, but we are working on it.
So the advisory board, 18 and over...
That's like, that's our planning board, Board of Adjustments, Park Truck and Greenway, our Marvin Heritage District. I think right now we have one position available on...
You have one that's young, you're...
Park Truck and Greenway. So as long as you're 18 or older, apply.
For the under 18, the kids are like middle school, high school, there's nothing for them at this...
Not, not right now, no. We're working on it though.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
This might be a question for Darren at the park. Like, I'm watching what's going on out there and I don't know what that is, you know, but it's like, is there somewhere on the website where this is everything that's going on?
Well, some things are like private companies that come in and utilize the park and then some are park events. So Derek, you can...
Yeah, so almost everything that's going on here is, we don't do it. So we don't, we don't do programs. It was designed as passive recreation, kids can play games, you know, and have a good day with family, enjoy the community gardens, play around, just golf, whatever. But we have, you know, this guy, he buys a professional pass for $200 a year to open his IT classes out here. We've got various people who do golf drinking and trail running, drinking and boot camp classes, photographers.
I guess sometimes when we come up here, because we love the garden, the community garden, absolutely love that, I have a resident, thank you, they come along together for us. And we love to see soccer players, we see photographers, and I just say, well, when I speak with my neighbors, a lot of them don't even realize that things are going on up here. And particularly, I know a kid, family's from Littleton, they're like, oh, we need the soccer here. But there's no way that you can communicate that, like, none of our community members might have that.
Well, we're not putting it on. That's the thing. Like, we can't promote, you know, one thing over another. Like, we're just here to provide facility, you know, people have a birthday party, they went to bar, if they, if scouts want to do their ceremony, they get their soccer shots, you know, wants to be here on Saturday morning, they buy a professional pass and they're out there.
So it's not like on the beginning, you could say, these are the things that are going on, you're contacting them if you're interested, then you can come over there.
Right. We're not Waxahaw, we're not, we're not fully, you know, having games, you know, we're just, you know, passive recreation.
And it used to be resident only and we've opened that up to, you know, non-residents as well and stuff that, you know, it is a park and stuff. You do see an uptick this time of year with the photographers, with the foliage and weddings and take pictures. So a lot of people that know this area will bring a photographer. All we ask is that they have that pass to, you know, you know...
Just a good business.
Yeah, so...
Derek, I have one other question. I think to say to this question about kids and activities, I do think I saw that there were volunteer hours that people could work with some of the park. Is that true in you?
Yeah, so, so we used to do it to like earn your pass, but since we get away with the park pass, you know, that incentive is gone, but we will not turn down any volunteers. We have Christina Pope on our ERG board, we've got a number of volunteers working with her, managing the cottage garden up front. Bob works with scouts and he's got another volunteer. So we do get a lot of just people who just want to do service hours or just want their kids to get out of the house and do something positive.
That's okay.
Basically, we're the Bay Area Club, they were up here, you know, two, three times a year doing service projects on Saturdays. So anytime anybody wants a volunteer, we'll take them.
Is that how you planned it too?
No, this is, mine was distributed, so, being explored or something.
Is it not a men calendar? Is it not a men calendar for the property so that you can tell whether it's closed or public company? Or if it is something that's going on, it's open to public, it's open and it's public company, you know, or, you know, it's actually a person, like, that, maybe that's how they get in that. Because if you do have a random family class, you never have a mom.
Yeah.
We do, it's something that's closed, you know, you want to get that.
Yeah, we're slow moving in that direction. We've got to get some technology updates with the Marvin software, that's standing in for the junior levels to use. So we're real close to having something like that and obviously on our new site, you know, the power that's hard, we might actually like that, we might serve those things.
But you're telling us as a resident and a park manager that you like to know, you know, hey, who's there to be in this crowd, so maybe that's absolutely a good thing to do.
So, and if there are any other questions, feel free, but I'm going to ask one since I have you all here because this is, this is the, I don't know, you may want to call it the 800-pound gorilla in the room, but the Heritage District, it hasn't been defined yet as far as uses and stuff like that. We have ideas of what it could be and how we will go about creating that, that district, if you will. And there was a survey put out. Now, we've heard a lot of stuff and, you know, complaints about what may or may come in and stuff when it may have not even been talked about, you know, and that's where we have Coffee with Counsel so we can clear the air on some of this. A lot of it goes through the Planning Board, but is there any, you know, as we're trying to figure this all out, because ideas are free, in my view, and it's, you know, ideas come to us all the time, hey, we should do this, you know, and I, we have essentially about 12 landowners, correct? Including us, 12 or 13? 13 with us. So Marvin is part of one of the landowners in this district of 100 and, what's the acreage? 125 acres is what we've essentially look, are looking at. Is there anything you guys say, oh, because we've, obviously we have town hall. And by the way, we did try to work with individual landowners to see if we could do a public-private partnership because the build where we did build was, you know, it added cost because of the, there was a reason it was given to us for free. Let's just put it that way. And then once we started building, we had to get rid of the fluff and then we were able to build on it. But we did try that first and that was unsuccessful, but, you know, we talked about like a farm, like a farmer's market potentially, like on Saturdays, when the weather's good. I know, I talked to other communities like Waxahaw, Weddington, in fact, someone in our neighborhood, I just talked to him today, in Weddington Chase, they bring a food truck to their neighborhood just to get the neighborhood to come together. So Food Truck Fridays is what they do on, at Weddington where you're never building a building, you're just, you're creating a space, a gathering space. And what I've learned in this process of the, you know, since 2013 is to make a town successful is you have to have gathering places. A lot of times they are farmer's market, restaurants, things like that, you know, low-key and the way you control it, because even if you wanted a coffee shop, you can't go in and say, no Starbucks, we don't want you, we want a mom and pop coffee shop. Well, we're not allowed to do that. But, you know, we can control a lot of the crazy talk by the size that we allow to be built as far as square footage. You know, if we say the max is going to be 5,000 square foot, Target's not going to look at that, Walmart's not going to look at that. So those stories that you hear that we're building high-rises and Targets and all these things are just absolutely false. It's not something we want. I think we all moved here for the same reasons you guys moved here and keeping Marvin a special place, but we've got this area that we may or may not be able to control from a speed standpoint and a traffic standpoint if we own the roads roundabout to roundabout. So there's a lot of exciting things that can happen. I will say that when I had Planning Board in front of us, I think John, you may have been there, said, please raise your hand if you've ever created a town from scratch. And no one raised their hand. Not council, not Planning Board, no one. So, you know, we had to seek talent and then we got accused of, you know, master planning communities and stuff, but there is some master planning involved. And, you know, these, these are things that, you know, you pretty much have one shot at it. So if there are ideas out there, we encourage you, whether tonight or on your own, if you don't feel comfortable with, sending us a note, sending Christina, go ahead.
Well, I was going to add on to that, but one thing I forgot to mention during the next few years, you know, the big thing is improving quality of life, that Marvin Lou Brand thing that I forgot to speak about is, we received a grant from Marvin Lou, it's a sidewalk activity from all the way down Newtown Road, from Newtown, from Marvin Road to Newtown Road, Marvin School, you have complete sidewalk access to all those neighborhoods. Exactly, that Marvin's out. The intent there is create that blockability, you got residents of Marvin's, you know, wanting to walk in schools, walk in the trails, walk to that coffee shop, or even, you know, people who begin to use that residential, you know, that's something, that's a need right there itself, is be able to have that access to, to whatever, you know, commercial, beauty, food, and as well as schools and so on. So that's kind of the big thing, bringing the community together and it's taken it through a lot of different ways. And, but that's where that Marvin Lou Brand comes in though, is that we receive that, that is something that actually has been denied. Yeah, we're already set this law, the DOD tied and that got pushed off, now we've actually got a recommendation that we're going to be able to start online. So we're going to be doing that next time we're going to implement it, and our, hopefully that will be finished up in four or five years.
So are there any, John?
I know that, you know, there's been a lot of meetings and discussion on whether it's true, who created this for the last couple of years, you know, but you mentioned 12, you know, different components. Are they generally supported now as how that process has progressed, that they kind of voice in things and are they generally supported for the different needs of them?
I would say we're not having those conversations with the individual landowners as much unless it was an established meeting. We like to have all of council there when we do have those meetings, so I'd probably turn that to Hunter.
So that's, well, and that's what I think, because I know there's been like public deal with meetings that I've seen some of these.
So that's one of the reasons that when I came on, it was recommended, was to create the small area, because in the context, it kind of, a lot of that work was done in the region, one day, so the language and kind of, like I said, that kind of drive that future land use map. But that's kind of the extent of that, the small area plan, that's where you get some properties that you have to communicate with all that, and that is that face, that plan, and then you write the recommendations, the goals, you know, that sets that vision that in theory actually creates the language in this space, some of the language being created at the same time. So, so yeah, so, not near my time, you know, for me, I do know that there's parking orders and they have a law in the process, there's a few sort of interests here, I think all that committee, you know, a lot of that is taken, that, hey, you know, we want this area law, although they maybe want to see that for their property. So that's how a lot of this district, you kind of be able to wear that, you have like a lot of boxes.
So any ideas of specifics that you might like to see and could happen, could not? Okay, you can just email us. Chris?
Is sizing the parcels and the allowable storefronts, is that the only tool you have to mitigate the risk of another mattress store?
Yeah, yeah, well, that goes, yeah, that goes into uses and stuff and that's one of the things, I think, way back when Publix was being, they were actually kind of, they were good at what they did. They said, well, tell us what you wouldn't want. I'm like, no, 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 we're not going to play that game because here's the reason why. We don't know what's coming 10 years from now. Vapes weren't around, a vape shop wasn't around. So if I only listed what I wouldn't want and then I didn't have vape on there and they're like, oh, it's not on the list, I can put a vape shop in there. So I think what the process is, is more of us for council to decide, but then us come up with some sort of use list, right?
So, yeah, one thing I'll add to that is, once we, before I start with, to those you guys, the form-based code, which is pushing that language, the regular, towards language, I go to the government, so the status of history, there were permitted uses in there and specifically not permitted uses. The only thing that actually why we had admission to this, which that's kind of what they have called to grab attention and why it was kind of capable was that it used to be way back when the concept existed, it wasn't listed as permitted use, it was just not permitted, it was called admission or not permitted or admission. But with a lot of the way to stage changes in the languages, basically that became, that was not permitted or specifically defined to someone, it was a broad definition, it was like the merger, retail, and that's kind of the same target. It was, you had to tie it to maybe both, whatever that closest definition was. So one of the things that I've been working on and the part of the uniform that's basically a draft, specific definitions that kind of clearly define those, those uses, this, you know, some of those regulations, some of those definitions, so there really is no kind of greater, that's kind of the intent there. So there's a lot of things in the national base code that does that gives, and the staff and council kind of really regulate, you can't, sort of, kind of as Mayor was mentioning, you can't, but then, we regulate the, we have regulations, box standards, the design, which will kind of definitely impact any type of main, or I guess a big brand, or whatever people kind of bring in, because some of that doesn't fit their, their business model, the way they design their schools, it's very good regulations, it's very good, it's another way to do it. There's a lot of points in there that kind of really makes sure that this area is not going to become some of the types of major USA or something like that, is creating that mission to this one, to promote all of the businesses and provide that for whatever it's marketing, and so on.
Bob?
I'd like to speak to community post office. I think a lot of that's actually, a lot of that's, what, what is it called?
A community post office? Not an actual USPS post office, correct?
Something that's been beyond the office.
Okay.
Or we're trying to create a building, a building for, 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 that is us, I think the post office can be great.
Right. Post office isn't building anymore buildings anymore. In fact, now, I think if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, developments now, you can't get a mailbox on your house. You've got, they now have a center area, it's back to the days of college where you went to your box and you got your thing, you drive up and there's an area, so it's more efficient for the post, which makes sense because they're, you know, employing an individual to hit each individual home, you can't get a mailbox. I think one of, one of our developments has that, a few of them have it. Yeah.
a, there's 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 a, there's[1372.12]